Okay, we want to make sure it's quiet out on the audience, please. Thank you. Okay. Uh, I'm going to ask Pastor Greg to do the invocation today, right? And then I'm going to ask, uh, Pastor Jefferson, I guess a little turn, I guess, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir. Okay?
Okay, for all those who believe in prayer, pray with me. Father God, thank you so much for this day. What a great day. It's the day of an election in a little city in the state of California, and what a blessing to have all of the, uh, the engines of democracy working together and, and people deciding what they want to see in the direction of the, the future of the city. Thank you for that. Thank you for the peaceful transition that we have every, every four years or so. Um, I ask you to bless the, the people of the dais. They've, you know, done this kind of thing on, on their own. They've taken up the mantle of public service voluntarily, and it's a rough gig, and we just want to bless them, Father. Ask you to take care of them and help them in their work and those areas that they're being, you know, kind of pressed in as well, and, and also, Father, we want to pray for the whole city of Hawthorne and everyone in it, all the workers and the people who live in it, Lord. We ask your blessing. You're a wonderful Father anyways, and, you know, we know you bless all the time, but today, on this special day, Election Day, we want to ask a special blessing for everyone who lives here. And we ask these things not just for our city, but our state and our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Protem Patterson.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you very much, sir. Our first item, okay, so, um, okay, we all know what's, what's going on today. Today's election night, so I'm going to ask all our council colleagues to, uh, everybody's done their homework, done their research on the things today. So I, I, I really don't see a reason why we should, you know, uh, be kept away from going to where our election night parties are in, in an ample amount of time, et cetera. So definitely want to start off and, uh, saying congratulating, uh, our city clerk, Paul Jimenez. Uh, we'll have another additional opportunities to congratulate you and thank you for everything that you've done for the city. Uh, you set a high standard for the city clerk's position, um, doing all the things that you do with your outreach and with your, uh, your food giveaways and just the social media informative information. So I'd like to give you a round of applause and thank you so much. And I'd like to do the same with, uh, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine. Um, again, we'll have other additional opportunities, uh, to thank you for everything you've done with regards to the city. You've been a very, uh, uh, strong, uh, solid, uh, person of integrity, uh, and honest, and you've always sided with the community. You've made decisions that benefit the community. Proponent for the arts here in the city of Hawthorne for business, so we'd like to give you a round of applause as well. And I know we have two other colleagues that are in election today, so we'll see how everything turns out and, uh, we'll have our, you know, we'll say appropriate, uh, comments when it's, uh, appropriate, right? So thank you guys too for your service. Greg Fallon-Treasure and Councilmember, uh, Montero.
Thank you.
Our first, uh, first item is a presentation. Chief Ishi, uh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, appreciate the, the opportunity to speak just for a couple of minutes. Um, as you know, I've announced my retirement. I'll be leaving at the end of this year, and I just wanted to take this opportunity just to, uh, say thank you, not only to our elected officials, but to our members that are here, our community, um, the city manager, Vaughn Norris, and everybody there here that's, uh, helped support the police department. Uh, as the chief for the last four years, uh, we've been through a lot together, uh, as a city, and, uh, I'm proud to say that the organization, uh, was, you know, came through in flying colors thanks to your support. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all of our city employees, our department heads that are here. We spent many hours together, uh, to make sure that the city is functioning and safe and, uh, they're, they're just, it's been a pleasure working with everybody. Um, it's been thirty-two years and time really does fly by, uh, to work in one city that's, you know, has seen so much. There's so much history here, but most of all, I'm just, uh, I'll miss the people and just proud of the employees that are working here and, uh, just humbled by giving the opportunity to be the, the leader of the organization, of the police department. So on behalf of the police department, but also personally for me, thank you very much for, uh, giving me the opportunity to lead, uh, this wonderful organization of the Hawthorne Police Department and being part of this city. That's it. Thanks. Good evening. You're too kind. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's it, checks.
Chief, don't go anywhere. Um, you, you just give me goosebumps, you know that? Just, you know, here, because, you know, you have been an outstanding, uh, chief, but also an outstanding member of this community, like you said, for thirty-two years, right? Um, my hat goes off to you because I know you create so many programs. You were part of the, a lot of other programs that was established by the, uh, Hawthorne PD, you know, from Coffee with a Cup, from the Police on Bike, Community Policing, at our schools, um, you have done outstanding. And I, and, and I have to tell you that I don't want you to go. Uh, because you're still too young. Look at you.
Thank you. I'll take that as a compliment. Thank you very much.
But I know, you know, thirty-two years is, is, it's a lot, uh, and especially on, on the line of duty that you, you are in, uh, it's a challenge. Every day you don't know what tomorrow will bring. So I have to say, um, I'll miss you, but I'm not going to let you go so quickly, so I'll be calling you. All right. Take care and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, Chief Ishi. Um, you have taught this community and the, um, in the county and California what community policing is all about. Um, people ask me all the time, um, what, what, what is community policing? And I say, well, you need to talk to our police department because we do community policing in Hawthorne. And thank you for that. Thank you for caring about the relationship between the police and the community. The community loves, the community of Hawthorne loves its police department because of you, because of Chief Fager, and because of all of you who've worked so hard to create that relationship. Thank you for that. We want to make sure we keep that up.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Ishi, thank you so much for, um, not only for our, being our chief in the last few years, but more importantly, um, your contributions that you've made since you've been our chief, uh, in various ways, and a lot has been already said on how those efforts have helped in the community. I look forward to just, um, celebrating you a little bit more on an upcoming event we have planned, and then, um, ultimately, you don't leave till December, so there's still time. Uh, you're still our chief. I don't see you gone yet.
Thank you.
But, uh, just to, um, in note of your presentation today, just letting the community know of your retirement, just, uh, wanting to be able to say thank you thus far for your efforts, and we'll be celebrating you more. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, definitely, I'm gonna take an opportunity at a later date to, to really kind of write some of my comments, right, and, and share my appreciation, but I want to say thank you, though. And I want to thank you for the conversations that we've had during the time I've been on the council and for your leadership and your example and all the things you've brought to our police department. Definitely, um, you know, from, from our conversations, I have a lot of confidence that you have, um, put together a, a, a great environment and, uh, great infrastructure in our police department, so our police department will thrive, you know, after you've retired, so I appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And of course, for myself, I want to thank you as well for your commitment, thirty-two years. Uh, so that must have meant, that must have meant you started like around ten years old, right?
You're too kind. Thank you.
But, um, you know, I, I want to thank you also, and notable things that I've seen has been, have been, uh, the technology that you've implemented. Uh, you want, we make, you have made sure that we have had the best technology, not just the newest, but the most appropriate and, uh, the best technology. Uh, you've instilled, uh, good practices within the police department, and they have been followed, and that's how we've been able to, uh, uh, build, uh, further trust with the community. And then the morale has been, uh, rock solid with our men and women in the police force, so I want to thank you for your dedication. And of course, just like everybody else said, I will have further opportunities to be able to thank you, but as for now, uh, I can, I can tell you whoever's going to be occupying your spot will have, uh, big shoes to fill. What, what? Is this an early, is this a spoiler alert?
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
But thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause, everyone.
Can we go take a picture with him all together? Chief, you want a picture? Come on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a picture. All right, and three, two, one, three, two, one. Uh, one more. Three, two, one. All right, thank you, guys. All right. So now for the good stuff, the oral communications.
All right. Um, pursuant to Government Code, Section 54954.3, all remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. As the governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Hello, everybody. Uh, Gordon Michael Meagle, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the eighth, nineteen fifty-two. Uh, tonight, uh, you know, Hawthorne City Council will be doing a second reading of the, uh, Marijuana Cannabis, uh, Ordinance, uh, twenty-three, uh, fifty-two, I guess it is, uh, and that, uh, I wanted to say that, uh, the ordinance which would allow for six retail cannabis licenses and eight cannabis delivery licenses and establish, of course, would establish rules for cultivation, manufacturing, distribution businesses, uh, business, and the number of business licenses, uh, and allow for onsite consumption, uh, three dispensaries in the city. While cannabis is obviously not on the same level as cocaine and heroin, I do not want to see California become a narco state like other countries. Now, also, if the ordinance passes, uh, businesses will have thirty-day window to, uh, submit applications, after which licenses, licenses will be awarded, uh, by a panel of seven city, uh, staff members, uh, using the merit-based point system. Now, uh, Hawthorne Police Department and Hawthorne City Hall will utilize officers and staff who are diverted from, uh, you know, important work and are paid with limited, you know, tax revenue. Uh, now, uh, mind you that also, that, uh, uh, as has been brought up by others, uh, in the community at times past, is about, uh, uh, the ordinance will have, uh, impact, uh, on crime, uh, safety and, uh, other, uh, things related, and, uh, some of which has been brought up in previous meetings. And that, uh, has been something of concern to me as well. And that also, here, uh, what we have seen, uh, that, uh, one thing I should say is that going back to the, uh, ordinance where they're talking about a five percent, uh, you know, sales tax and all that. Uh, it has been put out there, you know, by, uh, those that have done analysis of the, uh, of the ordinance, that, uh, that the city of Hawthorne would attain approximately about three hundred thousand dollars in annual tax revenue from the cannabis sales. But, uh, quite honestly, uh, you know, revenue from it will be affected by a sale in the underground, uh, market and, and pales in comparison to the potential twelve million dollars of sales tax revenue from a Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza mall revitalized with stores, restaurants, theaters, et cetera. Now, uh, must be noted that a number of cities, Redondo Beach, uh, Rosa Beach, Manhattan Beach have, have, uh, put forward, uh, either by council action or, or otherwise, uh, you know, by voter initiative to vote on the matter, uh, Redondo already having rejected it. Now, uh, what I do want to conclude is that, uh, uh, the Hawthorne, uh, you know, this is such an important matter that, uh, the Hawthorne City Council needs to place this cannabis proposal on an election ballot.
Sir, thank you for your comments, but your three minutes is up.
I'll just.
Yeah, we have to end.
Yeah, for voters to decide. If the charter proposal is not approved, then both the cannabis and the, uh, and the charter, uh, proposal without the salary part could be combined in a upcoming special election. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, let's make sure everybody keeps, uh, the time within the three, but we appreciate your comments and, uh, it's, everything's been noted. Thank you so much. Patricia Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President, CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I have three announcements. I forgot to put one on that. I put two, but there's three. Uh, Thanksgiving, we'll be giving out three hundred and fifty turkeys, um, and three hundred and fifty bags of groceries, November twenty-second at one PM. And at Christmas, December twenty-third, we'll be giving out four to five hundred turkeys and four to five hundred bags of groceries. In fact, we'll probably have pallets of food, uh, for, for Christmas to give out and hopefully Thanksgiving also. Uh, and the only other thing I didn't put on there is that, uh, well, that's December twenty-third at one PM. And then, thirdly, we're having our Christmas mixer on December twentieth at the Hawthorne Chamber from five PM to seven PM. The taco lady will be there, and the entrance fee is really no fee, just bringing a toy. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Oh, from Senator Bradford's office? Would you like to make some comments? Are you observing? Please send our regards to the senator. Is there anybody wishing to speak? We need you guys to line up now so we can get an estimate as to how many people there are. So we have, uh, the, uh, members of the Parks and Rec?
Yes.
You waiting for somebody else to come up with you?
No, we were just checking the line.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Vargas, council members, um, staff and community members. Thank you much, thank you so much for your time tonight. Um, I am a Commissioner with Parks and Rec, and I am so grateful, um, to be privileged to be on the commission, um, of commission, of, excuse me, of Fine Arts and Community Services. I'm here with my fellow Commissioner Balboa, Hermenia Balboa.
Hermenia Balboa, also a Commissioner with Park and Recs, and happy to be here, uh, talking to you today.
I am searching for my doc, and of course, it's not here, but I am here to bring up and to revisit, um, some information that was brought up by Councilwoman Valentine in December of twenty twenty-one, um, on a home beautification project. Um, after discussing it in our council, in our commission meetings, we made some, um, slight modifications, and we are going with a slightly different approach. Um, however, we are doing something similar to, um, what we do for our other, our other home decorating part, um, contests. So like we do already, we sponsor a Christmas and a Halloween home decorating contest where we encourage community members who already decorate their homes to share, um, and participate in a contest. Um, now we're just going to move in a slightly different direction and focus on beautification in a, in a different way. Plants are a natural decoration, and so when Valentine mentioned this idea to us, as a master gardener, I was very excited. I love any projects, especially if they're doing, if they have to do with plants. Um, and as I said, plants are year-round decorations, so this would be an opportunity for homeowners who already have landscaping, already have gardens, to participate in a contest where they could receive city recognition, and the winner would win a, um, a prize. Hermenia, um, Commissioner Balboa has generously offered to pay for the first prize, um, in this pilot. And so we are excited that the, the council has been discussing beautification, city greening, and, um, environmentalism, and so we hope that this is the first of many conversations, um, regardless of the, the, the decision made on this project. But we thank you very, very much for your time and your dedication and commitment to our city. Thank you for your support in the city of good neighbors and all that you do. So, thank you. If there's any questions, oh, sorry, we're not asking questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members, city staff, and neighbors. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Hawthorne Veterans Affairs Commission. My name is Kyle Orlemann, and I currently chair that commission. It seems to be commission update night. Um, as you know, our commission has been down a couple of members, and we have not been able to do some of the activities over the COVID lockdown period that we had been able to do prior to that. However, some things have changed really recently, and we're back, so we wanted to let you know about that. Um, one of the things that we did manage to do during the lockdown, uh, during the centennial celebration, we did have an information booth out here in front, and we were able to hand out a lot of books and other information to the residents who are veterans and their families, and we also were able to bring in the color guard that led our parade, and we were also able to bring in the, um, the Huey helicopter that was towed in the parade, and then a lot of the city residents were able to take pictures in the helicopter, which is kind of a cool thing. So that was a whole lot of fun, and the other part of it is that the activities that we've typically done, um, many things have changed during the lockdown, and I'll get to that in a minute. But one of the things that I do want to thank you very, very much for is we have two new commission members that I am absolutely delighted to welcome onto our commission. We have, uh, Dr. Stephen Nellman, who joined us a couple of months ago, and we also have Fay Johnson, who is here tonight, and she joined us officially as of yesterday afternoon, and we're very happy to have her. One of the things that we had been talking about at the commission novel was whether or not to have a Veterans Day event, and since Veterans Day is three days from now, um, that would be a little bit of a challenge for us to do at this particular time. However, um, with new Commissioner Johnson's, um, expertise at hand, she was able to put together a listing of a number of the Veterans Day events that are happening at other areas around our city. We have copies for each of you up on the dais, and we also will put the other copies on the, um, on the table outside of City Hall, so that people will be able to go to those various functions, and hopefully we can get our act together and perhaps do something next time. So the next thing that I wanted to deal with is I need some help from you in a couple of different areas. Um, during the time of the lockdown, many of the meetings that we used to attend in person, and we were able to get flyers and information and bring them back to the city, we were able to put flyers on the table at City Hall, we were able to put them up on our city website and on our Facebook page. A lot of that has gone away, and the meetings that we used to attend in person, where we got most of the information that we disseminate to our residents here in Hawthorne, who are veterans or who are family caregivers of veterans or survivors of veterans, we have not had the ability to put that information out. And now that the city staff has changed, and now that we are almost up to full capacity, we would like to start disseminating that information, and we can put it online so that the people will be able to get that information. Right now, we don't have the wherewithal to access the city website for our Veterans Commission page or our Facebook page, and I'm asking for help from the city staff on that. And the last thing, and I'll be extremely brief, um, there has been some direction from the council, um, that has cut the time of our meetings significantly and put us down to one meeting per month, and with some of those meetings being on federal holidays, that's essentially giving our commission about nine hours of meetings per year. And so I would like some direction from you about how you want us to prioritize the events that we put on. We do plan on doing our regular Veterans, um, Service Provider Fair in the spring. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nobody else, any further, uh, speakers? I'm going to declare oral communication closed order. Mr. Clerk?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have three items on the consent calendar. They are items two through four for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, approval of the City Council minutes for the special meeting of October tenth, twenty twenty-two, and the regular meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Item four, City Treasurer's request approval of the warrants for November eighth, twenty twenty-two for adoption.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, please, uh, continue.
Item five, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Tree Termins Project Number Twenty-two dash zero-seven, Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were three bids received. All were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. West Coast Arbiters Inc., three hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Mariposa Tree Management Inc., three hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. North Star Land Care, two hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I move to, to accept, to refer the, the bids for, uh, study recommendation. Do I have a second? Okay, move. Seconded. Uh, please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Ordinances of Mr. Clerk? Nine, six?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, with item number three, the meeting of October eleventh, um, I was not present, so I'm not voting for that, just for the October tenth.
Perfect.
Um, I would like to reopen item number three. Is there any opposition? Uh, is that the correct approach, Mr. City Attorney, just so that we could have a formal vote on that, sir?
Yes, that's fine.
To reopen the vote on that, or what would be the right terminology?
Um, technically, it's, it has to be agreed to by whoever seconded.
Are you okay with that, sir?
Yeah, it's okay. And, and also, on October eleventh, I wasn't present for the meeting.
Okay, so then you're gonna have to, everybody, please just state that as we move. Okay, so, so, uh, we have, uh, approval to reopen that vote. Item three, can you read it again, sir?
Sure. Um, item three, approval of City Council- Sure. Item three, approval of city council minutes for the special meeting of October 10th, 2022 and the regular meeting of October 11th, 2022.
Okay, go ahead. Your disclaimers or your exceptions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm abstaining from item number 11.
Okay.
Under number three.
So I make a motion for all items, for all of those meetings, with the exceptions of those meetings that our council colleagues have stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Okay, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes and with Alex Montero or Councilmember Montero abstaining.
Okay, do we have that correct? Is everything correct for the record, sir?
I think Councilwoman English is abstaining from the minutes of October 11th as well.
And Councilmember Montero was a specific meeting that he stated. You'll find that in the, in the video minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. So item four has been, we concluded with item four, right?
Sorry for that. I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's important.
Okay, do you want me to move forward with ordinances?
Please, please move forward, sir.
Okay. Item six, ordinance number 2235, second reading. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California enacting Chapter 5.100, Commercial Cannabis Business to Title V Business Regulation and Licenses, Division 2 Businesses Regulated for Adoption.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
I, I have a comment. When, where should I, when should I read it into the record?
Oh, wait, it's been moved and seconded. You can mention it now or after we vote.
Okay.
It's already, it's already headed towards a vote.
Okay.
But before or after would be the same, same difference, I guess. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Comment?
Yes. So, I have spent a great deal of time thinking about this ordinance in the context of what is best for the City of Hawthorne, regardless of my personal preference. This ordinance has been designed over a long period of time by council members and staff to try to answer all the concerns the public has had about the cannabis industry. It has been crafted well. It has been designed in accordance with the law and with guardrails to make certain that the people who operate the businesses are law-abiding and have the necessary management experience to keep the businesses profitable. The city needs the revenue and this industry has the potential to be a good steady stream of that revenue. We will be competing with other cities who have already enacted cannabis ordinances or who are on the cusp of doing so. If we do nothing, these businesses will be all around us. Our citizens will be patronizing businesses in other cities and those cities will be earning revenue and we will not see any benefit. Based on what has already been done by the city and what will be done through the application process and through oversight to make the cannabis industry work for us, I am comfortable in supporting it.
Thank you. To the chair? Go ahead. I just want to say well said, council member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So also kind of, also want to echo what my council colleague said. Of course, I hesitated in a while back and I just want to make it clear that, you know, that the staff and the consultants and all the feedback that was given, was taken into account in order to make, to have enough, have sufficient protections so that our children, our communities would be safe and wouldn't have to, you know, see these operations and for there to be a, for there not to be any crimes. That's why we had a member of the police department that was part of the committee. We had members of staff, the consultants that participated or city attorneys. And so it was well put together. It was well put together. And the same things you said, if we don't put something in place, then it, I'm definitely not gonna let the state come and impose its will on us. We see what happens when the state gets involved. So definitely want to make sure that we have a say in how we protect our city. Okay, that's it. Seven, please.
Okay. Item seven, ordinance number 2236, second reading. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California amending sections 5.16.010 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to the city clerk determine the time and place of administrative hearing for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Second.
Move, seconded.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, the agenda reflects that you have items eight through 13 on the city manager's consent calendar. You'll be reading them on behalf of the city manager. Go ahead.
Yes, I will. Item eight, construction of speed humps on West 142nd Place between Judah Avenue and Isis Avenue and Dottie Avenue between West 135th Street and Rosecrans Avenue. Item nine, highway safety improvement project, traffic signal upgrade and reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue. City Project Number 21-06, reject and out to bid. Item 10, approval of purchase of case wheels labor, I'm sorry, loader. Item 11, amendment to the City Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation Program Guidelines. Item 12, progress payment number three in the amount of $631,220.56 due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Silmar, California for Holly Glen Park and Jim Thorpe Improvement Project, Project Number 22-03. Item 13, approve a blanket purchase order in the amount of $180,000 to Redflex Traffic Systems for the city's red light camera enforcement program. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. I have a motion to approve items eight through 13.
To the chair.
Who's to approve?
Okay.
To the chair.
There was a motion, there was in, in between the second, there was a comment. So the comment goes, has precedence.
Thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification because I remember back in, I want to say 20 or 21, the item number 13, the Redflex Traffic Systems. There was, from my understanding, already a contract or something that we had agreed on or had, had got through. It was in either 20 or 21 on the Red, the Redflex Traffic System. So I'm curious to know what this one is.
Thank you, council member. Just for clarification on that, there was a bit of confusion during the budget process as to who would be processing the invoices from that particular vendor. The police department did not put it onto the budget process, but the funding to fully fund the red light camera program is available in the approved budget. We just did not achieve or we did not obtain the blanket purchase order at that time.
So this is the item from back in what, 21 or 20, 2020?
Uh, it is the same agreement. The agreement is still in place, but we needed to re, renew a blanket purchase order to fund it in the current fiscal year, 2022 through 2023.
And it's budgeted under the police, police's agenda or police's budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Right. Did we already vote?
No.
Okay, so it's been moved and it's been seconded. Well, no, can you repeat your second, please?
Second.
No, no, you made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, uh, Mayor Protem Patterson?
Second.
Okay, apologize.
Since the, since the comment took precedence over the second, you just have to repeat it.
Understood.
All right, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, we made it through the agenda. Elected officials reports, comments, could keep them brief if you could, but whatever. We still have, we have an ample amount of time. Go ahead. Uh, Mr. City Treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a pleasure being the city treasurer and I hope I can continue after tonight. I just want to thank everybody for participating that voted. Even if you didn't vote for me, it's great when everybody participates. And the great thing about this country is, you know, peaceful transition. So awesome. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we're gonna see anything crazy. I think maybe one of the peoples that would have caused that left already, so, but go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Just have a few updates. Just, I want to, I hope everyone that's here tonight did vote. Just remember if you haven't that you have until 8:00 PM tonight to vote and you can actually go vote at a vote center tonight. I want to express my gratitude to all the volunteers who came out this weekend to package and provide produce to over 450 families. In addition to the produce, we provided flyers to the community so they would know where our vote centers are located. We'll be out there again on Saturday, November 19th at 9:00 AM and we'll be there until supplies last. I also want to congratulate everyone who took the time to run for a position. It takes a lot of time and energy to run a good campaign, so I just want to thank you for stepping up to advocate for our community. I want to publicly ask, on that note, I want to publicly ask everyone who ran a campaign to plea and put signs up, to please take down your signs. I believe that part of running a good campaign is to also put down your signs. So please, tomorrow morning or tonight, go around the neighborhood, the cities and take down your signs. Because we have a beautiful city and want to keep it that way. I also want to thank Diana, Debbie and Juan for the support they provided all the candidates during this election. The reality is that Monica was the person that really led our city for the, for at least a couple decades in terms of running our campaigns, so God bless her soul. With that said, our team had to kind of learn everything and figure it out and I just want to make sure that we do recognize our team because they really did need to learn a lot to take the lead this year. I also want to thank Robert because Robert, you played a huge role for us, so thank you for all the support. But yeah, so if you guys could please give him a round of applause because it was a lot of work. And that's all on my end. Yeah, and just, I just look forward to finding out who wins these positions. Whoever does become the city clerk, I'm just really excited just to help you in the transition. And I learned a lot these last four years. I've never been in politics before. I'm a college professor in education, so I learned a lot and I really want to share that. Any information, anything I can do to help that next person that's in the position. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to thank Jan Vogel and the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. The annual awards dinner was held on Thursday, November 3rd honoring community members who have gone through their various apprenticeship programs and they are well on their way to obtaining competitive jobs. They also honored alumni who are working in some of those jobs with some, some really good corporations at this time. So thank you to Jan and thank you to Jan also for the award they gave me for the Esther Williams Excellence Award and that was for my community involvement and I am so grateful to them for that. And I want to say personally to Greg and to Paul, thank you so much for your excellent service to the city. It's been a pleasure working with you and I hope we will continue to work together at some level. Take care.
Council member, Councilwoman English?
Oh, okay. No, you surprised me. I wasn't ready. But thank you. Let me first of all, thank everyone for having a safe and sane Halloween. I know that there was a lot of little ones running around and took time to inspect their candies and thank you to the churches and those that made events possible for families to come through. I don't celebrate Halloween, so I locked myself in the house. And, you know, I've never have. As a kid, I've never celebrated it. But anyhow, that's first. Let me just also say thank you to the city clerk's office for all your efforts and everything that you've done in your time, including your staff. Monica is missed. I, I hope that it'll continue. That department will continue to shine and be able to do just as great as those others before them. So thank you. Chief Ishii, we're gonna be celebrating you at a later time and I hope the community will come out and celebrate with us before he leaves in December. Just want to make mention of a couple of events and just thank also the chamber for their upcoming turkey giveaway on November 22nd and their Christmas event on the 23rd. I'm too, gonna be hosting a 15th Annual Operation Global. 15 years contributing in efforts to help families in need here at City Hall and that's gonna be on the 17th at 10:00 AM. Thank you to all those that made it possible. And I am just gonna make a couple of recogn, uh, recognitions of those that provided recognition of their stipend. Mayor, thank you for, for your contribution. Mayor Protem, thank you for your contribution. Republic Services, thank you for their contribution. South Bay Ford, thank you so much for their contributions. And it goes anywhere from 100 to 1,200, uh, 2,200. So there's a lot of money here that have come in efforts to provide turkeys to the community. South Bay Ford, Golden State Water, HMEA, the Hawthorne Police Department and North Great Market who we're partnering with to get the turkeys. And more importantly, they're providing us a discount that could give us up to $1,000 just in savings. And Councilmember Montero is gonna be partnering along with me and thank you for your contribution from your organizations by providing gift cards to the families of Hawthorne. For those that are interested, there's still time. Just make sure you call City Hall, give your name and must be a Hawthorne resident. However, I'm never one to say no, so please keep that in mind. I also want to thank our Veterans Commission on your efforts in, in providing a commission that is leading efforts to help our veterans, but more importantly, those that have yet to receive, I think, services. And, and we're, we're still trying hard to assure that services are provided to our veterans. And your contributions to the parade, that was great. I want to also congratulate Alaric Simon for his, Alaric, Alaric Simon, for his new role in the, in, the, not the Kowanas.
Lions.
The Lions on, yes, the mobile eye visions. So his new role, thank you for that, Alaric and for your volunteerism. You've been doing it for a great, a great job for many years. I also want to congratulate all the candidates. Good luck in all your, in all that you've done to get to this point. Best wishes to all of you and to Councilmember Valentine for your time here on the council. Thank you for your service and congratulations on your honoring by South Bay Work Enforcement Board. And for just in general, you've done, you've done a lot in your years here in the community. Too much to, to say exactly. One important one is your business fair, so thank you for that. And to all of our department heads for what you're doing and continue to do, to shine. Look forward to the new year and bringing more to the city, especially in dollars. And look forward to the partnerships that we have yet to receive with regards to upcoming and new businesses. And thank you, City Attorney, for your hard work and new programs that you've implemented in the department. And Vaughn for keeping steadfast and assuring that everyone's happy here at City Hall. Because that's all I'm hearing of all the good work that you're doing. So with that, I will leave that at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the residents for coming tonight. I know it was a rainy day out there, election day. So you came out, so thank you very much and it's always a pleasure to see all of you. Again, I want to say thank you to the staff. You know, it's been a great year because we already, almost at the end of the year, because we only have one more meeting, right? In December. So happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Especially all the staff been working very hard, you know, sometimes some of the departments still on skeleton crew. So, but they still deliver. So thank you very much for all the work that you do. I want to say, you know, Paul, you have been a great asset to this, to this community and you a member of the community, you live here. So you have seen firsthand what this public official is a servant, right? So and you have done as well. So I, I hope this does not be the end. So maybe it's just a pause, right? And maybe we'll see you return again to the public service because I think you a great asset to the community, okay? To Ms. Valentine, like I told her, I think it was this morning or yesterday morning, that I had a great respect for Ms. Valentine because she was a very steadfast and never waves on, on her decision. She have, you know, been here since 2011. She have shown a great character in improve our community, you know, especially the business, the art, you know, especially, you know, being part of the Holly Park Neighborhood Association and then being here at the council, you have make your mark. And that is what Jan Vogel gave you the Esther Williams Excellence Award because I think you, you deserve it. So it was a pleasure to be there with you to receive that award. And like I said, you know, I will miss you. I'll miss you because, because you, you have done outstanding to our community and, but I know where you live. So we'll, we'll keep high on you. I want to say that I got good news from you from the Clean Power Alliance because, you know, Edison's been going up on their rates. But the Clean Power Alliance, actually, you're gonna save money. So from now until, So from now until June thirtieth, your bill from the Clean Power Alliance, you're going to see a reduction of two percent, and, and Edison is going up and up, so you're going to see, if you're still with Edison, you're going to pay more. So our Clean Power Alliance, that now is one hundred percent renewable energy for our city, so we are actually saving money, and it's a clean power, all renewable energy, so that's a good news. The other piece of news that we got from the Homeless Task Force, the County of Los Angeles have opened a center right in, in South Central that is, is not just for the L.A. city, but is for the L.A. county, that have sixty-five beds, it's like one-stop center, that have bed, have service, have urgent care, so it's a model to build one-stop centers to help the homeless. So that's the kind of thing that we have to keep in mind. The other thing that I want to mention is, yes, the veterans, I would love to see more collaboration between our Post Three-fourteen and the V F W Two thousand and seventy-five, right? Because usually they do have a celebration for Veterans Day, and they're going to have a Veterans Thanksgiving Lunch coming up on November twentieth, so I would like to see our commissioners to get more partnership with our two posts that we have in the city. But it's good to see that the commission now is full, operating yet. Is still a missing one? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a candidate for you. He's very good. He's a young man, he's from the Navy. He was at the South Bay V ceremony, so I think he's a well-qualified candidate. But even when you're talking about the South Bay V also, you know, like, we met a guy named Rodney, and he was homeless in, in Hawthorne, and now he's employed and have an apartment. He have married, but he was homeless. So that's the kind of thing that we have to see, we have to have compassion and help this, this individual, because some of them is not just drug or alcohol abuse, it's just circumstance of life, challenge of, of life, so, so we have to help them out, okay? Some announcement, the Hawthorne Landauer Minister Association is going to have their annual Thanksgiving Lunch, is on November seventeen at eleven-thirty to one-thirty P.M. at the Memorial Center. So again, November seventeen, the Hawthorne Landauer Minister Association is having their lunch. The Hawthorne Historic Society is having a speaker, a lecture series on November fourteen, is a Monday, November fourteen, at six P.M. at the, at the Hawthorne Historic Society Museum, and at the Jim Thorpe Park. They're going to have a public service to explain about the disposal and the food waste, okay? So it's again, November fourteen at six P.M. at the Hawthorne Museum at the Jim Thorpe Park. Talking about Alaric Simon, you know, every year the Lions Club have this fundraising event that you can buy Christmas tree through the Lions Club. If you buy this, if you go online and buy the Christmas tree, some donation goes to the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club, and like Ms. English said, that Alaric Simon became the president of the Lions Mobile Screening Unit, that have done outstanding job for our community, because if you recall, last year, they gave about two hundred and twenty glasses, free glasses to the, to the, our community, and this year they gave about ninety glasses to our community, so it is very good to help the Lions Club. Also, on behalf of the CETA, I attend this inauguration dinner that I was amazed, you know, it was about seven hundred Nigerian folks that live in the community, L.A. County and Hawthorne, they did, they called the Coal City Club North America, so I presented proclamation to them. Councilman Coram Price was there also, right here in LAX, and it was amazing to see, you know, some of the Nigerian culture in action, that they live in the community, but also they cared about what's happening back home in Africa, so it was good to see the whole culture, and I was, I was amazed on Saturday night. So, on that note, I hope to see you guys here on December thirteenth. Happy Thanksgiving.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause to Councilwoman Montero for her service.
No worries. I'm not going to.
Nobody said anything. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank the community for coming out and participating in this process. Definitely want to appreciate everybody that showed up and voted today. I think that's, that's just a very valuable thing that we can all do as citizens. Want to thank all of our staff, all your hard work, and just your, your commitment to the city. Also want to show my appreciation to the City Manager and the City Attorney. They've been with us as, in their official capacity, in their, their contracts for just over a year. We know we did their, their annual performance review, which, which kicked in a little bit of a raise for them after their successful completion, and, you know, you guys have done a spectacular job, thrown into this position without any kind of warning, and had a lot of challenges. I'm sure you guys still dealing with a lot of challenges and a lot of personalities and stuff like that, but very, very, very proud of the work you guys have done. I really want to share my appreciation for you guys, and want to say thank you. I want to thank the Police Department and all your hard work, and really want to thank the Chief again. It's really because of Chief Ishi that I've developed the, the great relationship I've developed with the Police Department. As a youth in Hawthorne, you know, I've had some interesting run-ins with the Police Department back in the nineties, and things have changed a lot over the years, and I really, you know, owe this great relationship that I've developed, and I'm still developing, to the Chief and, and the officers that are, that are following his lead, so I definitely want to appreciate the Police Department for you guys are doing, what you guys have done, what you guys are doing, what you guys continue to do. To our City Clerk, thank you for your contribution. You know, I, I didn't endorse Paul when he ran for, for Clerk, and when, when he came in, he came in and made it, and tried to make a lot of changes and ruffled a lot of feathers, and, and I really appreciate you for doing that. You know, he's made a contribution I don't think anybody else would have been able to make. Definitely made his own mark, did, did things that other, that a previous clerk, who was a great guy, you know, didn't do, and brought a lot, updated the office in a lot of ways and, and brought some, some great contribution to the community, and, and definitely sorry to see you go. You know, if you had chosen to run again, I would have endorsed you this time. But yeah, thank you. I want to thank you, and it really takes some time to thank everybody. Took some notes, I'm trying to be brief. To Councilmember Valentine, I want to acknowledge your commitment to the community or desire to move the community forward through art and economic development. Always been steadfast at that. Councilmember Montero, want to wish you luck, you know, this evening, and thank you for all you've done for Hawthorne, and what you, I know you're continuing to do for the city regardless of, you know, what position that you hold, you know, it's your commitment to, to serve others. I know you'll continue to be a leader in a community, you know, fighting for the best interest of the residents. Councilmember Reyes English, want to thank you for your contribution and your experience, or really, your contribution to my experience in my first two years on the council. I've learned a lot from you, and, you know, I've run into so many people out in the community that has given me a testimony that Councilmember Reyes English has helped them in some type of way, probably more than anybody else, and, and I really appreciate that. Mayor Vargas, we don't always see eye to eye on many thing, on everything, I would say, but many things we do. I'm hoping that, you know, regardless of whatever those, any differences that we might have on any issues, we can definitely continue to focus on the things that we do agree on and, and focus on beautifying the city of Hawthorne and bringing economic development to the city. You know, I'm, I'm looking at my last two years, you know, of my term, so I just want to take some time to kind of appreciate these first two years and, and everybody that's contributed to it. And I think, oh, and of course, want to acknowledge all the candidates that are in the race. It, it's stressful to run for office. It's so stressful to run for office, and oftentimes you're spending a lot of your own money that you'll not really get back, and people, you know, attack your character, and, and people doubt you, and, and some people say that they're going to donate to your campaign and they don't donate, and people say they're going to come to your events and they don't show up to your events, and some people, you knock on their door. Your signs get stolen, right? You knock on people's door and they say, "Don't stop here, keep moving," right? And then, you know, you run into people that are just gorgeous, gorgeous people who, who appreciate you and welcome you in, and there's so many ups and downs and stuff like that, and so stressful, and I got so much anxiety myself, and I'm not even on the ballot, but I'm so excited for the city, but I want to, want to thank all the candidates that are in this race. I think this is one of the best things you can do for your community is to run for office, much less serve your community, you know, we, we need the best of us to choose to serve, you know, everybody else, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to thank, I want to thank everybody for being here. Of course, I would like to thank all of my council colleagues, and I know, like, I know someone said right just now that we don't see eye to eye, but guess what? If you really take note of all the votes we've taken, I've said this before, we vote on ninety-nine point nine percent of the items just the same, okay? So I guess sometimes it's those, that point one percent of the items that we really kind of get all worked up over, right? So that we get really overly passionate about, and that's okay, but that's why the differences of opinion, this country was founded on people from different cultures, different thought processes, different religions, and look what this country has become, a great country, because of that diversity in opinion and being able to come up with a, a, a good, strong, fortified decision and policies. Okay, so just like steel, I mean, don't you like kind of anneal it, you kind of heat it up, cool it down, cool it down? Okay, it's kind of similar with when people from different thought process come together and make decisions. So I want to wish good luck to all the candidates that are out there, candidates for, for the Treasurer, for the City Clerk's position, two of them are here, Greg Fallon and John Jefferson, and the ladies that are back at home waiting for the results in a little bit. And I just want to wish good luck to all the City Council candidates, any of these two which could be our partners here, and we could see somebody come back. Mr. Awadala, Mr. Rojas, Ms. Shepherd, Mr. Kimafuna, Mr. Reynoso, Ms. Sanford, Mrs. Manning, and Mr. Montero. So just like was just said a little while ago, I ran about, about five races myself, and I know how you guys are feeling right now, no matter what you say, "Oh, no, yeah, I'm okay," or "No, man, come on, your stomach's turning," you know, "You couldn't sleep last night, wondering what's going to happen." I've been through it. All the stories that, you know, my council colleague mentioned, the fundraising, it's painful, people, you know, just asking you questions and attacking your character, coming up to the podium here during all communications and bashing you, different, different things that could happen. So the true test of your commitment to the city of Hawthorne for all of those eight candidates, all of the four City Clerk and City Treasurer candidates, is if we're going to see you, even if you don't win, if we're going to see you back and involved, okay? That's the true test of your commitment to the city of Hawthorne, if we see you being involved and see you at the events volunteering for things, for commissions, et cetera. That'll be the true test. So it's my hope and wish that those candidates will be able to serve the city of Hawthorne in some form or other, even if it's not on the City Council, and City Clerk Paul Jimenez will probably, we will be seeing you back in some capacity or other, so I'm really hopeful for that. So a lot of good things. Congratulations to Mr. Alaric Simon also for recognizing and for assembling such a great, an event, and there's just a lot of things we're going to do. So what are we going to do with regards to the week of Thanksgiving? Do we conclude?
No meeting.
We concluded? Okay, so there won't be a meeting?
On the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, so this meeting today is the last one of this month, and the next month, next meeting that we're going to have will be?
Number thirteen.
So just one meeting in, that's going to be thus swearing in, and that's going to be the last meeting of the year, correct?
Yeah.
All right, just so everybody knows that, we're only, only going to have one more meeting before the end of the year, so good luck to all the candidates, and we'll see you on December the thirteenth, okay?
Yep.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Let's see what God says.